Councilor, would you begin?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Call the meeting to order. Regular city council meeting for July eighteen, twenty twenty-three. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where we stand. One nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Report on closed session. Mr. Ross?
Mr. Mayor, council members, members of the public. Your council convened in open session at four thirty-two P. M. And after ascertaining that there were no comments on the matters for closed session consideration adjourned to closed session. You concluded it at six twenty-four. I will do a written report upon return from closed session for all matters agendized with the exception of item one A. American Canyon One LLC versus Napa Unified School District. I want to report matters of public record. The matters of public record are that there was since two thousand sixteen a school funding agreement involving A.C. One and the Napa Unified, Napa Valley Unified School District. And that the school district chose to terminate that agreement. Notwithstanding that termination, there's been a settlement among American Canyon One LLC, which is the developer of Watson Ranch, and the school district for full payment of school fees. Separate and apart from that matter is the fact that the school district, Napa Valley Unified School District, has been furnished with an extensive audit accounting by the city, demonstrating timely compliance of school fees for all building permits for that same time period by the city. With that, I would conclude the report upon return from closed session unless there are questions.
Any question for council members?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. We'll continue with our agenda this evening. Proclamations and presentations.
Mayor Garcia, we have roll call.
Oh, sorry. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Miriam Abadamos.
Here.
Councilmember Mark Joseph.
Here.
Councilmember David Oro.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pierre Washington.
Here.
Mayor Leon Garcia.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you all. City of American Canyon proclamation. July twenty twenty-three is Parks and Recreation Month. I think we have a lot of folks here very interested in this one tonight, so thank you all for being here. Come on up. This is all the work you guys do. Yeah. This is your moment to celebrate it with us, and this is our way of saying thank you for what you do every day throughout the whole year. You are truly part of American Canyon's finest, and we thank you sincerely for all you do. So therewith, July twenty twenty-three, Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of the community throughout this country, including City of American Canyon. Whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who use parks. And whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, many other activities designed to promote active lifestyle. And whereas Parks and Recreation is a leading provider of healthy meals, nutrition, nutrition services, and education. Whereas Parks and Recreation programming and education activities, such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, environmental education, are critical to childhood development. And whereas Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of local tax base, increased tourism and attraction and retention of businesses and crime reduction. Whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. It is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change. Whereas our Parks and Natural Recreation Areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreation outdoors. And now therefore be resolved that I, Leon Garcia, Mayor of City of American Canyon, on behalf of the city council, do proclaim July twenty twenty-three is Park and Recreation Month. Thank you all for what you do.
Welcome to, there's a lot of us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Way to go. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we're gonna go picture. Okay. Oh, I got it. I got it over here.
Oh, thank you.
You're good now.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia and council. And thank you for declaring July twenty twenty-three as Parks and Recreation Month and recognizing the amazing men and women who serve this community as Parks and Recreation professionals. Our team is committed to enhancing our community's quality of life by providing safe and clean parks, facilities, and trails. Providing programs and services that meet our community's diverse multicultural and multi-generational community. And fostering growth of our community and bringing people together. And sustaining and stewarding natural resources by protecting habitats and sensitive species within our open spaces. Both the Recreation and Parks Department works closely together. And we are proud of the partnership and relationship and being able to serve this community the best way that we can. I would like to bring something to your attention and specifically recognize a couple individuals that are in this audience or may not be here this evening because they're still working. First, I would like to recognize Bill Dodson, Brian Mattern, Rick Hall, Jr., and all of the Parks Crew for helping getting our Napa Junction facility up and ready for our summer programs. Without them, we wouldn't be here this evening. We were actually able to serve a lot more children this summer and be able to offer an amazing summer camp, so thank you to them. I would also like to take this opportunity and recognize a few recognize Skylar Padilla and Michael Ng. This past week during our summer camp, we had a participant who had an emergency. And they worked very close, they worked very quickly. They recognized and responded very quickly. And due to their quick response and training, we had a very positive outcome. They were able to remove an object where a child was choking at our camp and called nine-one-one and got EMS out here quickly and were able to remove that object. And I would like to take this time to recognize them and for all their amazing work. And I don't want to forget the individuals that are leading this group. Stacy Johnson, Ashley Logan, Alana Ben, and David Farley. Without their hard work and dedication to training the staff and getting them ready for the summer, I don't think that we would have been able to do what we did, so thank you to them as well. So thank you to our amazing Parks and Recreation Team for all of you, for all that you do for this community and making the City of American Canyon the best place to live, work, and play. Thank you.
Thank you. Clearly, Park and Community Services is an area where touches more people's lives than I can imagine in American Canyon. Virtually every family at one age level or another. Individuals of special needs. I'm just looking at the progress being made on our new playground at North Hampton Park. Since I live in the neighborhood, boy, they're putting up more equipment all day. So I look forward to that celebration as well. So on behalf of the council, we really appreciate and value what you do. Thank you. You touch lives. You make this a wonderful place, wonderful city to be in. Thank you. That being said, we'll move on with our public agenda. Where are we? Now, public comments on items not on the open session.
Mayor Garcia, I have Victor Roman.
Hi, guys. Good seeing you again.
Good evening. Welcome.
It seems like I've been coming here quite often. So I'm no longer a virgin, so I'm good to go. I want to bring some attention to some stuff that's going on in our Jason City down in Vallejo. And there may be some seminaries over here in American Canyon. As you know, Vallejo had their first black chief. But he also has been run out of Vallejo by the police union behind some A.T. software on corruption, on bounty camps. And I guess the police unit didn't really, really receive that very well. So they basically ran him out of town, threatened him. And then they bring in his second-in-command interim, which I'm referring to Chief Williams. Then they brought in Mr. Ty Jason, and he wiped out the program. So basically Vallejo wouldn't know how much corruption is going on. My question is this. I live in American Canyon and American Canyon prides on diversity, exclusion, and equality. And I see Mr. Greenberg back there. If I wanted to file a police report, you know, on a police officer, I checked your website. There's nothing there for me to file a report. And do I have to physically come down to the police department? Okay, because I went down there and I was greeted at the door. And I was basically interrogated, you know, questioned. And I felt that I have the right to file a complaint and not be questioned about my complaint. And then I found out that instead of going down to A.C. or any police department, just file it with the FBI. They'd be quicker to respond. But my issue is this. I have children, and we base this community as vibrant, equity, diversified, and all that. But in your police department, you have sent twenty-seven employees. Two of them is non-police officers, but are there any black officers in there? Any person of people of color, as well as the fire department? I don't see that. So the question is, where is the diversity in that? If I want my kids to look up to leadership, it's not here in American Canyon. So I'm just asking straight-on questions, trying to get some answers to what I need to know if I want to stay in this community. Because I don't, I don't see there any diversity here or equality or inclusive for people of color. Where we consist of, people of color here, sixty percent, and it's thirty percent of white people. So again, where is it? Maybe you can answer that at the next meeting. And going back to
Sir, you're at time.
I'm sorry?
You're at, your three-minute time is exceeded.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Please be, feel free to be in touch with the police department here.
I have Justin Hamilton-Hole from online.
Hello, Eric.
Go ahead, Justin.
Let me just give it a moment.
Can you hear me?
For the room to clear.
You're right. I'm sorry. Can anybody hear me?
Hold just a moment, Justin. Hold on.
Please go ahead.
I wanted to shout out Erica. We, I just called Erica off it, and I had, she gave me good news. I'm gonna be get paid my treat soon. Not this August, but September. And I look up the map.
Sorry, Justin, I'm having a hard time hearing you. Can you speak a little louder?
Can you hear me?
Increase the volume.
Now you hear me?
That's a little better, yes.
I look up online, it's showing the map. It's a current, the current ramp is on the black line to my house or in the pay or treat. That's my question.
Anyone answer the question? The current ramp.
Erica will be in touch with Justin. She'll give you, Justin, Erica will give you a call tomorrow and answer your question if that's easier to talk through, if she can talk through the map with you, okay?
Okay.
Thank you for calling in.
I have no, no other hands raised online.
Anybody in the public wish to comment? Public comment time.
And to our residents that are American Canyon Cert and Napa Cert went to the National Cert Conference at the end of January. And all of us participated in different classes from eight in the morning till five, which makes us a stronger and better Cert team. We learned a lot of new things. But in addition to all the different classes that we went to, I'm proud to say that out of seventeen Cert teams, we, we, it was a, it was a volunteer thing. So our Cert team volunteered to participate in a, what they call rodeo, where you, you have ten different categories that you have to do. I won't go through all of them, but they're pretty, pretty extensive categories, and you're timed on each one of them. And like I said, we competed against seventeen different Cert teams. We had like thirty-eight states there, three countries. And I'm proud to say that our team came in number two. It was, I'm just so proud of our team. I mean, there was four of us from American Canyon and one from Napa that was on our team. And other teams had like maybe eight or nine people participating. We had five. So I'm proud of our team. I just want everybody to know that we meet monthly, we train monthly, we train quarterly. So we're trying to do everything we can to keep our community safe. So just wanted to give a shout out to our Cert team.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Way to go, American Canyon Cert team. I'm a proud member of that team. Thank you. Anybody else have a public comment? If not, then we will close public comment at this time, move on to our, with our agenda. Any agenda changes, council, or I will accept a motion to accept a consent calendar. So moved on the consent calendar?
I'll second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abadamos.
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph.
Yes.
Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes. Thank you, council. Next on our agenda is public hearings. Item number eleven, public hearing for citywide LLAD fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Councilmembers.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This item is the, the second of two items we do annually related to the assessment for the Landscape Lighting Assessment District. And Rick with Harrison Associates was here to present the item tonight, so thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Nice to see you all again. It's been a couple of years, I believe. Good evening. Again, my name is Rick Clark from Harrison Associates. Here tonight to discuss the city's Landscape and Lighting Assessment District, which is governed by the nineteen seventy-two Act. The Act requires two meetings each year. The first meeting was on June sixth, where you preliminarily approved the engineers' reports and the assessment rates. Tonight is the second of those two meetings, which is the public hearing. And this allows any interested, interested person from the public to voice their opinion, to ask questions, things of those natures of the council or of staff. And after the public hearing is over, you as the council have the option to finalize and approve those assessment rates and the engineers' reports for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. As for the Assessment District and the assessments and the district itself, there are three zones in the district, as you're aware, La Vineye, Vintage Ranch, and Napa Junction. In the engineers' report, there are diagrams showing where those, each, each of those zones are located. The assessments for all of the zones, all three of the zones, proposed to be increased by the allowable CPI for this year, which was five point five nine percent. This is the first time in six years that the assessment rates have been proposed to be increased. So it's been a nice length of time for the property owners to not have to see an increase to their assessment rates, and this one is modest. The increases were necessary to help offset the cost of the capital project staff has proposed in each district, or each zone. The zone reserve funds were also utilized to help minimize the assessment rate increases for that. As we mentioned, or as I think, believe as mayor mentioned, one of the examples of a planned project is the La Vineye Park, the, the La Villa Bellagio Park, excuse me, where the equipment is being replaced. I'm just the under, the surface is going to be replaced in that, I believe, Silver Oak Park. They'll be getting a new restroom in the coming year. It's budgeted for that. Irrigation controllers for all three of the zones. So there's a significant amount of planned capital improvements for the zones for this year, including a large tree trimming project planned for Zone One, which was La Vineye. That completes my very brief report. Thank you for your time and happy to answer any questions you may have that I can help with.
Okay. Questions from council?
I don't know, just may I don't know if there's any public comment, but I do have a question.
Yeah.
Want to do public comment first? That's okay?
Certainly okay. Your council want to do public comment?
I have no clarifying questions.
Right. Public comment's open on this matter. Anybody online?
I have no rants, no hands raised online.
Okay. Councilmember Oro, go ahead with your question.
Yeah, thank you very much. I actually live in LLAD. I think it's three, which is in the Vintage Ranch area. Is that right?
That's two.
Two, two, in two. You know, and I appreciate the services that we have for that and appreciate the, the reluctance over the last years to, to raise those fee, to raise those fees. And I've been an advocate on council of not doing that. But it is time, I think, now to do a modest increase. And I think that's a fair assessment for what we need to have done there. I do have something that needs to be added to that, and I've brought this up once before and I haven't repeated it. But it needs to be part of the LLAD, and I don't know how we do that. But if we're raising fees, we should do that. Right in front of the high school, there's some landscaping near the bus stops closest to the street. I actually thought that the, the school district had to take care of that, but for some unknown reason, everything below the sidewalk belongs to the City of American Canyon. And so if you're on American Ca, if you're on Newell Drive going northbound, on the right-hand side, you'll see a slight hill, and it's nothing but thistle and weeds. Nobody's taking care of it. I think our staff is going out there right now and probably just doing weed abatement really more than anything. I think it needs to be added to match the landscape that's there. I think the district has put in drought-tolerant plants, and it's probably very low maintenance. Not asking for a bouquet of flowers to be planted every year there, but just something that is not ongoing thistle. And I would like to see that happen, and it should be included in probably in this LLAD or if there's somewhere a budget across the way. Currently, I drove by yesterday. It is an eyesore. Thank you.
Just to answer your question, first thing I would want to find out for that is who owns that piece of land now?
Sir, I just said it was the City of American Canyon.
I'm sorry. Thank you. I missed that. Thank you. Okay. Well, we can certainly look into annexing that piece if it's not currently within the boundary of the district. It would have to be annexed in, simple process, and we can certainly look into doing that. Yeah.
Yeah, and I don't know if it's you or if it's staff, but we should do that because nobody's maintaining it right now.
Is that all, Councilmember Oro?
Yep.
Councilmember Joseph?
I, I would concur with Councilmember Oro. I remember that little spot. And it, it doesn't need a lot of treatment, but something to make it look like it isn't just a dead spot. But my question is unrelated to that, and that is, can you describe the public outreach that we went through and what public reaction to the fact that this is our first increase in six years?
Good evening, Mayor, council, community of American Canyon. Erica Almond Smithy is Public Works Director. We did outreach via the postcards and gov, list gov earlier this year before. We didn't have much attendance this year. Last year, we had more attendance, especially in Zone One. We had one person in, in Zone Two that came this, this year. And then we had maybe a handful, not even a handful, come into Zone One, which to me, I take that as a good credit that we're doing something right this past year, improvements. And we didn't have the numbers yet at that time, but we did discuss that there was potential for an increase. We haven't heard anything about this public hearing to date.
And then in regards to the increase, you know, I appreciate the fact that we've held off for six years, but I also think it's not a bad idea to regularly plug in small increases each year. I remember stories of the old water district that kept the rates so low that when they finally tried to reset them to normal, it created such an outcry, they all got recalled. So since I they all got recalled. So since I don't think that's a good outcome for our council, it might be worth it to look at small incremental bumps each year. Nothing too severe, but just to kind of keep us going, because inflation is here, at least for the time being. So just as a suggestion for down the road.
Councilmember Abadamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. Jason, you and I had talked a while back about this area and the issue with leaves needing to be swept up more frequently, and like between the bushes needing to be cleaned more frequently, especially over there by Shenandoah Park. I feel like I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't advocate for more cleaning and making sure that area stays clean if we're increasing LLAD costs, because we're going to hear complaints from residents. You just want to take our money. You just want to increase costs without doing your job. And I'm not saying we're not doing our job. I think we're doing, we're doing a lot of tremendous work, and I applaud our staff for that. But if you walk around those, that, you know, Vintage Ranch or La Vineye, well, I can only speak for Vintage Ranch, especially around the wintertime, there's leaves everywhere, all over the floor. And I know we can't control that, but I remember talking to Felix, and that wasn't a part of our contract to have the leaves cleaned up. My lawyer hat says that's a liability. It gets slippery. People can slip and fall on them. There's also oftentimes fast food and garbage in between those bushes there right across from Shenandoah Park. And then the graffiti in that cool little round thing on Newell, do you know what I'm talking about? That round?
The old fountain.
What is it called?
The old fountain. There used to be a fountain there.
Oh, that. There's, you know, lots of garbage there and graffiti there as well. So if we're going to do rate increases, we're going to need to step up our game a little bit, I think. And like I said, I don't feel like I'd be doing my job if I didn't advocate for that at this point, so.
Duly noted.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for the presentation. I was wondering if maybe CPI might be something to be applied. Or is it, could you speak to that, please?
That is, that is the goal here, is to keep up, because I think we tried to do a big jump in 2017, 18, and it did not fly. So, but we need to do something moving forward, and that's where we, at least the CPI, to keep up the cost of the, you know, labor force increase. We're probably going to renegotiate, I believe, next year with our landscaping contracts. So we're going to have to keep up the times, and this is that small incremental amount that will allow us to do so.
It won't be such a big jump when we, we need to have it. Could you speak to the gaps in some of the landscaping? In the past, some of the trees, bushes have died off. And what are we doing in terms of replacement?
Are we referring to Newell Drive?
Yeah, that would be one of them.
We're addressing some of that through that, some of it's through the canyon estates and private development work, PG&E work. So we're addressing that. We're in the works with that, as far as negotiation, what should be replaced by them, and what could be done by the city as part of the LLAD.
Anything we can do in terms of what species to select in terms of more drought tolerant?
I'm looking at our tree harvest that's here in the audience.
We can replace leg to leg.
We got, okay, leg for leg.
That makes sense. Okay, no, I would look forward to having it filled in. I know some years back, we had a big, there was an ornamental pear tree they used that got a lot of blight in it. I forgot how many, it was in the tens, that had died off throughout the city.
Okay.
So I think maybe something to consider there.
Okay.
At least the replacement should be there as well. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one thing, in addition to your question about the annual CPI increase, the methodology for this district allows for a maximum assessment and an actual assessment. We apply CPI to the maximum assessment every year. So that continues to go up, and then it's up to the staff, city council, to decide how much of that is actually used during any given year. The last six years, we've used nothing of the CPI. This year, we used it. So the CPI is applied already to the district. Really, just a matter of how much is applied each year.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Joseph?
Yes, a couple of the things that I remembered I wanted to bring up. First, those small CPI increases generates the revenue that allows us to augment our service levels to address the leaves and everything else that Councilmember Abadamas mentioned. So yet another reason for small jumps. The other one is, it relates to Shenandoah and, to some extent, Silver Oak Parks. I didn't see it, but I didn't look that thoroughly either. Are we reflecting the new arrangements, where the fees from the park rentals are staying in LLAD, as well as any kind of general fund contribution? Is that all plugged in now, or?
Yes, to both questions. Revenues received from facility rentals within the LLAD, the assets of the LLAD will stay within those funds. That's a departure from past practice. Secondarily, there is budgeted now a general fund contribution that contemplates a kind of fair share proportionment of the general benefit versus the special benefit. The concept of a landscaping and lighting assessment district is based on the concept of special benefit amongst the rate payers or assessment payers within the boundary, recognizing that both Silver Oak and Shenandoah, and even Main Street Park also are used on a more general benefit basis amongst the general public. We kind of went back and looked at usage, you know, comparing usage, special benefit usage versus general benefit usage, and applied a prorating factor to that. So there is a general fund contribution to that as well. So there will be no, there are no limitations on American Canyon residents as far as renting these facilities, bottom line.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hawley, for that. Anything further from the city council?
No, sir.
Questions? Public hearing is open.
Let's see, let me find it.
I have no speaker cards and no hands raised.
Hey, hang on. All right. Go on to the hard copy here. If there is no public comment at this time, then we'll close public comment and return to council for desired action.
I'll go ahead and make the motion. I'd like to move resolution number 2023, next in order, a resolution of the city council of the City of American Canyon. Wait, before I make that motion, do we that live in the LLAD need to recuse ourselves?
No, it's one of those things under both provisions of conflict of interest, where if you're affected as everyone else would be
Okay.
within the revenue area, then that's not a conflict, right?
Okay.
So you can vote on it.
Understood. Thank you. Where was I? I'd like to move resolution number 2023, next in order, a resolution of the city council of the City of American Canyon approving the 2023-24 annual engineers' report for the American Canyon Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District, approving the budgets within the engineers' report, confirming the assessment diagram and the annual assessment amounts, and authorizing the levy and collection of annual assessments for fiscal year 2023-24.
I'll second that.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
See, there are no business items this evening. We'll move on to management staff oral reports, maintenance and utility department update, fleet, buildings, and park maintenance.
I gotta get my glasses on so I can see that. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Brian Matern, Public Works Superintendent. I'm going to give you a quick update on fleet, buildings, and parks for the last three months. So fleet maintenance, we're still working with.
Can you raise that up a little bit so the microphone's a little closer to you? You can actually raise that whole table.
How's that? How's that? Oh, power.
He's really tall.
Sorry. Yeah, sorry. So for fleet maintenance, we're still working with Enterprise Fleet Maintenance Leasing, and we have our, still have our one mechanic that's doing most of the maintenance on all the equipment. Some of it goes off to the dealerships through the maintenance program through Enterprise. I'm not going to go through every bit of the slide, because it's basically the same slide you saw last time, other than we've received a couple more F-550 utility trucks. We have received a couple more hybrid F-150s. We have more coming. We just got an update yesterday that we have two new police cars coming, which is good. We have some that are going to be retired and auctioned off. We have probably eight more old vehicles that are going to be auctioned off. And we have some equipment that we're going to purchase, well, we've already purchased. It should be here soon, new equipment trailer and such. So that's basically, it's like more of the same that goes on.
Brian, can I interrupt you and ask?
Absolutely.
Since we're on the fleet side of it, how are we doing on getting electric versions of any of our fleet, particularly the F-150s?
We have been denied from Ford several times in a row. The previous director, Felix Hernandez, had kind of used the euphemism, we're at Disneyland, we're at the gate, ready to get on the ride, and they, oh, ride's broke. So what we did with Enterprise, we went with GM, and were promised that we're going to get at least four Silverado EVs, full EVs, from them in the 23-24 ordering. We've already ordered them, and we should know by October when they start to build.
Oh.
And then if we're either going to get them, and we should get them by next spring, or no, you're not going to get them this year, and we have to start again in March, the way we did with Ford. Because we're asking for the, like, the pro model, like, you know, steel wheels, vinyl interior, not the platinum leather everything and power everything. So for, you know, most factors, like, well, I can sell one at this high, or I can sell one at this high, which one would I rather sell? So we're trying, you know?
Great.
And then, any other questions for that? No? Okay, I'm going to move on. Here's some pictures of the F-550s and the hybrid F-150s. Unfortunately, right now hybrids only come in four doors, so that's what we got to take. Hopefully, next year, the year after, they will come in either extra cab or single cabs. But right now, that's the way that manufacturers put them out. Even Chevrolet's the same way. They just come in four doors, because that's what everybody wants, you know? Building maintenance, Ali talked to you guys about the biggest thing, which was Napa Junction, getting it ready. We've got the recreation side finished, and they're using it now. And now we're start to work on the courtyard side. It's going to be a challenge to do some things, but we're going to work through it, and we have a plan, and just trying to move as quick as we can through it, so we can get the Echo Center down at the old courtyard side on Luntland's, let them start doing their thing. He, Bill, did a rogu job, yes. Bill Dodson was the main factor between him and I and some other staff, Rick, and then our landscape contractor that came in and whooped the place up to get it done as quick as we could. And, you know, several contractors that I hired to get glass and locks and, you know, stuff like that done, alarms. But it's up and running, and the kids are enjoying it. So more highlights, basically the key card system. We're going to have new key cards. So if you guys have key cards to get in the building, starting today's the 18th, so tomorrow, the 19th, the access is coming in. They're going to put new key card readers in, and then we're all going to get new key cards, new updated key cards, because we've had issues where my key card doesn't work all the time. So we're going to get that taken care of. So that'll be the final aspect of that project. And then just mainly, just mostly for building maintenance was Napa Junction. He spent a lot of time there. And then park maintenance, they are doing, staff isn't doing it, but we have contractors doing the playground replacements at North Hampton and at Villa Bellagio. Our regular park maintenance staff is trying to keep up with what parks are there, irrigation repairs. We have just finished up the first round of open space mowing throughout the city, all the vacant fields and, you know, Paley Loop, and right here on Lombard, by the Little League Fields that we maintain, you know, not the Little League Fields, but the streetscapes, and along the creeks and riparian areas, along with the bird surveys. So if you see areas in your zones that, like, everything's mowed but one section, and there's ribbons in it, there's bird nests there. We can't go there till after September, when the nesting season's over. And that's the round two. And that's what we do twice a year, is get that stuff down for fire breaks, you know? And then they, the park staff actually did for, they did baseball field prep for opening like we do every year. They did bocce prep for every year like we did. And then the open space mowing. And then one of the projects they did was for Veterans Day, or Memorial Day, they whooped up Vets Park, tore out a bunch of old, kind of stressed raggedy shrubs, and replanted everything and reparked it, and got it all dialed in. So that way, when they had the event over there, the park was really, it looked really good. It was dialed in nice. And then some of the equipment, there's some pictures here, the remote control mower that we purchased to go through new open space. And if you've never seen it, anybody likes to play video games, you stand there and you look at a TV screen, and you watch the machine go. When we demoed it, I tried to get it to tip over on some of the steeper areas. It can do up to a 54-degree slope, which most of the slopes in the city, the steepest one we could find was 38 degrees. And I thought, no way, it's going to tip over. It's going to, no, it would not tip over. It's got such low center of gravity. So it'll cut through up to like three feet of grass and shrubs. So, or anything in its way, really. And there's a little video of it. Staff, actually, they follow behind it, one guy driving the gator and one guy controlling the machine, because it can go out 1,000 feet. So we want to keep within like, you know, 30 yards of it. That way, they don't lose sight of it. And that's about it for this time. I'll be back in three months to do it again.
Well, thank you for the report. You got a lot of, a lot of great stuff that's happening there. Thank you.
Yeah.
That mower, it looks very interesting.
Yeah, it's really, we, it's really, when, when we demoed it, we were across from Vets Park on what we call the Montovino Hillside. There's a detention base in there, and it's pretty steep up to the houses. And we were, on some of the slopes, I was like, I wanted to, I wanted to test it out. So it's like, we went up as fast as we could, and then flipped it and tried to come down. And the guy demoed, he's like, are you trying to tip it over? I'm like, yeah. He goes, watch, you're never going to tip it. And he went out there, and he was doing even more than I was doing. He goes, it won't tip over. It won't tip over at all.
You're able to adjust the height of the mowing blade?
Yes, you can. Yeah. It's not automatic, but with a little bit of work, you can raise and lower the deck heights. But we set it to be basically about four inches, because if you run it in the wet, it's good. But when we do it in the fall, where everything's dry and dusty, you don't want to have a dirt cloud going, you know, to mow it, where it's like, you know? The Newell Trail itself, we do mow as short as we can, you know, so that way, when the people walk in, they don't want to walk through four or five inches of the grass.
Well, that wider, flatter area there at Newell looks like it's.
Yeah, yeah. And it works out pretty good, because with the rolling dips, with the tractors that we use, you'll, the equipment on the back of the tractor, the tractor will go up, that goes down, the tractor goes down, that goes up. So this actually will hug the landscape a lot better.
Informs to the contour, then, huh?
Yeah, it does. Yeah. It was a good move to buy it. So, yeah, it helps us do our job better.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate the report. Questions? Vice Mayor Washington?
Yeah, thank you for the report, Brian. Some nice purchases. Quick question, though. With all these purchases, is it impacting your worker workload on your staffing?
No, they're still overworked.
They are still overworked?
Yeah.
Okay. And are we working on, working on that piece of?
Well, we, they do, the park guys do so much. Like, a couple of years ago, they inherited all the. Like, a couple of years ago, they inherited all the, the stormwater riparian mowing that the streets guys used to do, so that takes some time out of their spring and fall schedules that they would normally be doing other things. So, we've had to adjust when things get done. But there's only...
Five guys?
Five park staff members. So, there's, you know, they, they have, you know, they have a schedule, what they do on Monday, and then Tuesday, so, you know, there's not a, there's not a time that they're not doing something.
So, there is an impact, though.
Yeah, yeah. And that helps out a lot, because they, instead of, you know, they can just, one guy can go out there and, you know, when it's green, and one guy can go here, and one guy can go there, and, you know, it's like having another mower, so.
Thanks, Brian.
Yep. Anything else?
No, no, nothing for me.
Okay, Mark, nothing? Okay.
I already asked, so, good.
All right. Well, you guys have a good day.
Actually, Brian, the mayor controls the meeting, and I'm next.
Okay. What do you got?
Talk to me about Newell Open Space and what you guys are actually maintaining. I'm trying to understand from the city, you know, how we interact with that management plan, the Newell management plan?
Okay.
And what you guys believe that your duties are, and then I'm going to come back to you with things that I think need to be done there.
Okay.
Can you talk to me about that?
Yeah. Traditionally, because I used to be the park maintenance supervisor, so traditionally, what we did was we maintained just the trail, because it's an open, natural area. There is what was called, when I got hired here 14-plus years ago, the Boy Scout camp, which is, we called the meadow, where the picnic tables are. So, we just mow that area down, and we mow the trail. That's it. We don't go off the trail, we don't go down into the creek, because with the waters of the US and the biologists that we deal with for the bird surveys, you can't, anything that's on the trail has to stay on the trail, you know, for us. We, we're not allowed to go over the bank, you know? We have to stay certain distances away, because, you know, what they call polluting waters of the US. So, if there's dirt, that slough comes down, we have to kind of keep that on the trail. And with the way the weather is, sometimes we can get up there in March and do stuff, but like this year, it was May, mid-May, before we could actually get past where the natural waters run across. Because once they put the rolling dips in, the water has a freer path to go where it's supposed to go, but it kind of impacts what we can do to get up there, and, and like I said, we just mow the trail.
So, if I heard you correctly, if there was water crossing the trail, you're not allowed to mow at that time?
No, no. Because any mud that we create will travel down into the creek.
Okay, so you have to wait for it.
And then it basically makes tracks. We, we did, earlier, we had to go up there, it was, when was that, March, April, we tried to go up there, maybe May? And someone had been up there, and I, I reported it to Director Ali about, "Hey, who, do you know who's going up there weeding? Because they're, we haven't had a bird survey, they can't, they can't do that, you know? We don't want to get in trouble with the state." And they got up there, and they got stuck. So, they found what they could to get themselves unstuck, but then all the muddy water and stuff has the opportunity to reach the creek, which creates silt in the creek, which creates issues for us that we don't want.
Understood. And then eucalyptus fell down on the, one of the main trails this year.
Yes, yes. We, we went up there and saw that, and then it was like, once we can get safely up there, what we normally do is just cut it off the trail, because it's, it's, it's an open space area, it's a wild, natural area, so we don't want to, we don't really maintain it as a park, like a, an urban park, where it's got a playground.
Yeah, no, I, I understand.
We just kind of keep the trail clean and clear as best we can.
Yeah, I understand and appreciate that, and I've already learned something here in terms of water crossing the trail. That's, that's good to know. I was, I was already aware of all the issues around just it being open space, right, and to be lonely, lowly maintained. The trails itself, are you defining, the trails that you mow, those are the trails defined on the maps that you have there?
Yes, yes. It's, it's from the parking area, it's the, it's the lower trail, goes up to what we call the mangate and the red gate, because that's what they are. We used to have to go around Watson Lane and get in, before we had, Jason could probably answer it better than I can, the pie slices that, a couple of years ago, we were trying to purchase from whatever family owned it.
Yeah.
We had access from the Newell property, and the Jaegers would let us. Now, we have access all the way up our property. And the trail, which is the old, I believe it was like a Pijini service road to get to the towers, that got turned into the loop, so that's what we maintain.
Okay, so after mowing, what, what's the possibility of scraping that stuff?
We don't have the ability to scrape it. We did hire, a couple of years ago, RCD came in, and they hired a guy to come in and put the rolling dips in, and he did scrape it, but we, we're not outfitted to do that. I'm not a dirtwork guy.
So, we're not outfitted, or we're not allowed to do it?
That is a gray area.
Enter Ali.
Yes. That, that's a gray area, because they did do work there, but they did it to create the rolling dips. So, you know?
So, this last November, when we did the Ridge Trail Day, and we were preparing for the incoming rains, we actually did blade the trail, where we had the, we had some staff from the water treatment plant who actually used to work for the Solano Land Trust, so he had experience to blade the trails. And this was something that Director Erica Ammons Smithies and myself, and a couple other community members had gone up there and really talked about what it would take to maintain those trails, because that soil, when it gets wet and it dries out, it compresses, and with the cattle and everything. So, we're very aware of the, of the challenges, and we were planning on blading the trail twice this year. We were only able to do it in November, right before the rains, and then the upper portion of the trail, we actually laid some gravel down with anticipation that when the rains came, the cattle would come through and damage it. And then, once the spring, once we got the survey, because normally we start the bird survey in April, but unfortunately, due to the rains and how things had panned out with the weather, we couldn't do the bird survey until June. And by that time, the soil had already dried out and compressed, and that's really what we wanted to do. We wanted to mow, and we wanted to go back in and blade again to fill in those, those dibits and cracks. And we knew that this would be something that we'd either need to contract out with a contractor, or work with the, the Azavitos, who currently have a grazing license up there. So, we're in that process of trying to implement that plan, of at least try to blade twice a year within the parameters that we've been given, and being respectful to the bird surveys and the natural environments and elements that are up there. But we were able to blade it once this year. I felt it really was a great thing to do right before the rains, but unfortunately, because of the amount of rain that we received, we weren't really able to do the, the second phase of that project.
Understood. Thank you very much for that answer. Yeah, I, I, I'm up there a lot, and particularly on that, that south trail, that south side trail, that's an ankle twister on there. It's not even fun on a bike. There's large cattle, cattle grades there, and then they just stay all summer, and that's just, if we want people to enjoy that space and enjoy those views, we've got to be able to, I think you said blading is the right term, right?
I learned something from Erica, who's, has a ranch.
Yeah, so if we can, if we can figure out a way to blade that regularly, and if it, if it can't be us, you know, please come to the council and request a budget for that. It's, you know, we have two great open spaces here, our rivers and Newell, and I just feel Newell is a little neglected at times, because we're in this under, under this impression that it's an open space, and it should just be natural. Yes, I agree, but it should also be maintained. And that's what we're, we're lacking right now, and that's where the frustrations that I've sent on emails earlier is, you know, just trying to get a good cadence and rhythm for that. Understand that the rains are there, but I think, you know, if we could pay a little bit more attention to that, you know, we could, it only contributed, contributes to us being a better city for our citizens.
Understood. And also, Councilmember Oro, as part of OSAT's work plan this year, we are going to be talking about maintaining trails and what that looks like, and identifying the type of trails that we have here, and putting maintenance standards with each of those trails. And one of them, as we've heard from the community, Newell is a hot topic. It's something that we've been really trying to address, and, and we hear you, and we hear the community, and that is going to be part of this year's work plan discussion about the maintenance standards for Newell and all types of trails throughout American Canyon, because all, not all maintenance standards are, are one of, fit each of the trails that we have here. So, we really wanted to find that, and we really want to identify what those maintenance standards are going to be, and what resources that's going to be required to be able to maintain those trails. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I have no further questions.
I'll be calling on you for that budget.
Thank you. I had a question regarding Wetlands Edge. I really appreciate the landscaping maintenance that's been done on it. There's a lot of overhanging there for a while, and it's improved back. Likewise, recently on Kensington, the, would be the western end of it, some of the weeds that grow on that side, yeah? Thanks for getting that mowed. There's a lot of folks who, there with strollers, and they can't get past it, but now they can, so that's a good job. My question is, there's, there's some areas there where, in the past, they had landscaping, and it's died off. Evidence is the stumps that are left. What, is there a long-range plan to replace that, and what species are, would they be considering?
The long-term plan is yes.
Okay.
The species would be like-for-like, but drought tolerant, probably native California. There is no LOAD on Wetlands, so that's all general fund.
Okay.
So, I'll, I'll be looking to you guys for a budget to do that stuff, too, adjustment. Right now, we're maintaining what's there, and trying to maintain what's there. It's been covered with recycled water, so.
Yeah, I think some of the, there's some areas there, they have some, it is south of the corporate yard, there's some patches of brown grass, I don't know if that's, I'm usually down there with the sprinklers are going in the evening.
Mm-hmm.
And they all, some of them don't seem to be working, or might need some adjustment.
Right, right. And, and to, to fast forward with that, the last presentation, we asked for a budget update and more money to upgrade and update the irrigation system in this town, because most of the controllers are over 20 years old.
Oh, wow.
And we're, next council meeting, we're going to come to you, you guys already approved the budget for it.
Yeah.
And now we're going to do the, we already have it all lined up, we just had to get it, you know, have you guys say, "Yes, you can spend the money that we told you you could spend," and start upgrading the irrigation systems throughout the whole town.
I think we can understand that. The, the sunset is free, and it's incredible.
Yeah.
And so is the fresh air. So, yes, that's a great place. I run to a number of people who walk that on a regular basis.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Yeah, real quick, the theme is, I hear you saying that you can be asking for a budget for a couple of things, so I'm assuming that you're going to also be looking for a budget for staffing, for additional people.
Yes, yes. The, the higher level that we would love to give takes more people. It, it just does, you know? So, with the five guys and the 24 parks and open spaces that we maintain, they're, they're, you know, I'll be honest, sometimes we're behind the A-ball, you know, trying to get things done. And then all the ad hoc work that, that we end up doing, myself included, you know? It's just the way it works, you know? We want to get it done, and sometimes it takes longer to do things, you know? You say, "Oh, it'll take me two weeks to do it," and then you get in there, you start doing it, it's like, "Wow, I've been here two and a half months now, and I'm still not done," because things take more time than you expect.
Yeah, and from managing people, I realize that you probably are suffering also from probably call-offs and sick times and stuff like that, so staffing would probably be...
Not, not really, no, not really. The, the crew we have now, in the last couple of years, they're pretty motivated. We got some young guns that have come in, and the unfortunate part is, we all, like Rick, his, half of his staff is on probation, they're all brand-new. So, they, they have skills and abilities, but they're learning the standards of what we want. Because I was trained a certain way by the people before me, because where I, where I came from. I came from GVRD, I was there 10 years. So, I brought that here, and the people that were here kind of had that same forethought, and when you have somebody that's, like, "I hired you," and you're like, "Okay, I can do this work, what, what do you want me to do?" And then you got to learn what we want you to do, and how we want you to do it. It takes a little bit of time, and once they get used to it, another year or so, if no one moves on, or doesn't pass probation, or whatever, then we're going to have a really good crew. And that's what we're trying to build, we're trying to build for the future, not just today.
That's fair. Thank you.
And maybe we'll get more people, so, the more that we can, not so be so spread out.
Sounds good. Thank you, sir.
Yep. Anything else? Did I take enough time, Mark? You're laughing at me.
I was just reflecting how you've made a good pitch for staffing. I'm just kind of imagining what Jason's thinking, that's all.
I agree. Who could say no to that?
Yeah, I could say this, because I'm done. When I worked at GVRD, they had basically the same amount of parks, right? Like, 22 irrigated parks, I think it was 24 irrigated parks. I was an irrigation technician, okay? That's all I did was irrigation all day long, five days a week. There was 18 maintenance guys for their parks.
Wow.
Here we have five.
Yeah.
So, you go down there and look at what their parks look like, you're like, "Our, ours are better." But they're, they're, you know, to be able to do it right, you need more people, you know? Because then you can have a tree crew, that's all they do, is go around and do trees. You can have an irrigation guy. Like, I did irrigation the last four years I worked there, that's all I did. I had four guys, that, that's all we did, all day long, every day. And anything that was broke, we fixed. We came home, came to work clean, went home muddy, you know? So, it, it, it takes time, you know, and it takes staff. We're getting equipment, and now we just need to get more staff.
All right. Well, thanks for what you're doing out there, and thank the crew, too.
Yeah.
Because people work hard.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Well, I appreciate you guys allowing me to do what I do, you know, and allowing these guys to do what they do, you know?
All right.
So, anything else? No? Miriam? I'm free to go? Thank you.
Thank you again. Okay, anything further from, uh, Management Staff oral reports?
Uh, yes, Mayor, a couple other quick updates. I know Chief Krieger mentioned he had an update, and Brent and Ali have updates as well.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
If anyone were going to talk about staffing needs, I would have been better prepared for tonight.
All right.
So, here, I just wanted to give an update about National Night Out. It's right around the corner, August 1st, 6:00 to 8:00 PM. We'll be having sign-ups available, the QR code's up there, and we also have flyers around, and banners are going to be put up throughout the city this week. The deadline is a week away to sign up for it, to host a party. It's next Tuesday, the 25th. And currently, we have 12 parties so far, and those parties are available, the public ones are available to view on the website, cityofamericancanon.org backslash NNO. And what else? List of party locations will be, like, like typical years past, the party locations will be available, made available to council and to city staff to go around and visit each of the block parties. And that's all.
We'll get a map, then, huh?
I'm sorry?
We'll get a map.
Absolutely, Mayor.
Oh, good, very good, thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh, looking forward to National Night Out. It's always a great evening.
Yeah, we are, too. We'll see you there.
Chief, on behalf of the gentleman earlier this evening, staffing and diversity, can you tell us a little bit about the sheriff's recruitment policies and, and successes or lack thereof?
Uh, what, I'm not exactly sure what you want me to elaborate on.
Okay, the, the diversity of the, of our police department, ethnic diversity, I'm presuming.
We do have a diverse staffing at ACPD. Obviously, as everybody knows, our staffing does come from the sheriff's department through a contract, but our officers down in American Canyon are very, we are very diverse.
Okay.
And I gave him my business card and told him I'd, to reach out to me, I'd be more than happy, happy to talk to him.
Yeah, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about all the amazing things that are gonna be happening here in American Canyon over the next couple of weeks. On July 25th, the American Canyon Fire Protection District will be having a board meeting at 6:30 p.m. On July 27th, there will be a Planning Commission meeting at 6:30 p.m. On July 29th, there will be a Young Adult Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Seminar through the Seroptimist International American Canyon from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. On July 31st, American Canyon Library will be hosting a Friendship Bracelet Class from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. And on August 1st, the chief already, um, made you aware of National Night Out from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And then on August 2nd, we will be having an Open Space Active Transportation and Sustainability Commission meeting at 6:30 p.m. And then Aug- August 3rd, we'll have a Nerf Battle, um, event from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. If you'd like to participate in that, you can register in the city's Parks and Recreation, um, website. And then on August 5th, um, we will be, um, bringing back our Story Walk at the Wetlands. This is in partnership with the Napa County Regional Park and Open Space District and the American Canyon Community Parks Foundation. Um, this year, the kickoff will be on August 5th down at the Wetlands from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And we will be featuring Señorita Mariposa. Um, that's the book and it's gonna be in English and Spanish. And it's authored by Ben Gundir Shamir and illustrated by Marcus Almato Rivie-Riviero in both, um, in English and Spanish, which is an actual book that's gonna be installed along the Wetlands trail like last year. The other locations that we're sharing this experience with is with Skyline Wilderness Park in Napa and then, um, Moore Creek Path, Path in St. Helena, and then they come here last for the whole month of August. So we encourage you to get up and get out and play at the Wetlands and enjoy the, um, Story Walk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a minimum age for the Nerf Battle? Minimum and maximum?
Yeah, so I believe it's, um, third through fifth and then sixth through eighth. And so there's different, um, age groups because of the older kids get a very, um, aggressive and, and get into it. Um, so we like to separate that, but there's two registrations for each of those age groups. You're welcome.
Well, good evening, Council. Brent Cooper, Community Development Director. I wanted to update you on a couple of things that are happening. Uh, Director, uh, our Parks Director here mentioned the Planning Commission next week and we have a really exciting agenda. There are three items on the agenda that I think are, are gonna be really important for the city. Um, the first one is what's called the Promontory Subdivision. And this is the Newell family's property within Watson Ranch. It's, uh, about 56 acres. And it consists of 216 single-family homes. And these, these homes are a little unusual because they're going to come with what's called a junior accessory dwelling unit option on the first floor. So that's a, a separate living area, uh, right there on the ground floor. Um, and so that's the first of its kind for a subdivision in American Canyon. Um, the project also is going to be providing extensions for, uh, Rio Del Mar from Malon Way to Newell Drive. And it will also provide an extension of Newell Drive along its frontage, as well as an extension for the, uh, Napa County Vine Trail, which of course we all love to see happen. So there's a lot of really important pieces to this project, um, and some, and some new houses that are desperately needed. Um, the second project on the agenda is, uh, our first, uh, it's a three megawatt solar farm. Um, it's on a long vacant property on Highway 29, um, just north of the bridge over the railroad. Um, it's an L-shaped property, about 6.7 acres. And the electricity generated from that will be delivered to Marin Clean Energy. And so that's pretty exciting. Um, it'll be, the panels will be on, will be elevated. And so while they have that, there will also be boat and RV storage, so. What's also nice too, for along the highway, is the frontage there along, uh, Highway 29, uh, and Green Island Road will be landscaped, so that'll be an attractive, uh, addition. And then there's also a condition of approval requiring, uh, overhead utilities underground. And so, um, some discussion about whether this is big enough to warrant that, but it is a condition and an obligation in some form or fashion, uh, to come from this project. Um, so that's, uh, another, then yet another contribution towards improvement of the city that goes hand in hand with, uh, development projects. And then finally on the agenda, we have, I would say, an implementation of the Napa Valley Ruins and Gardens Hotel and condominiums. There is a subdivision that'll enable these condominiums to be sold, uh, to moving that forward. Uh, both the, the, the Ruins and Gardens subdivision and the Promontory subdivision will be coming to the City Council in, uh, your second meeting in August, assuming it successfully passes through the Planning Commission next week. I wanted to, to do a little shout out on our outreach that we've, um, now expanded upon, has become standard. Um, for the last few meetings and this one included, um, we do no less than seven outreach efforts for every project that's submitted. Um, the first one is, it's posted on our website. And when we do that, we provide a description of the project. We have usually a color illustration. And along with that is a link where people can submit comments on the project. And so it's been really successful, um, at getting people to be able to participate and, and tell us what they think. And we found it's a great opportunity to both, uh, empathize with the issues, because there are a lot of important issues in town, and then educate, um, on a host of issues, traffic, water, housing, all of these things that people are concerned about. It elevates our opportunity to reach out and explain what is being done. Um, and so I mercilessly steal from the management updates that you get from other departments and share. So for example, you know, what are you doing with traffic? You know, traffic is, is hard, but there are many, many things, three pages worth, um, of traffic improvements that this city is doing. And so it's an opportunity to get that message out. Um, and we did have one person say, thank you. So, you know, so it's, it's nice to see, it's gratifying to see, you know, that message get out. Um, and that's just from our first outreach. Um, we do send neighbor letters to everyone within 300 feet informing them of the project and also providing a website link, um, to provide information to us about what they think. Um, we do announce, um, to our 3,800 friends on GovDelivery that have signed up. They also get notification of the project, just like the neighbors do. Um, later on, when the project is closer to hearing, uh, we send a public hearing notice to all the property owners within 300 feet. Um, it's advertised in the Vallejo Times Herald. Um, later on then, the staff report is published on the website. And once again, all of our 3,800 friends on GovDelivery get an email invitation to connect and read that. Um, and then, uh, we have a, a project, uh, hearing reminder on GovDelivery. And then, and maybe I guess I should also mention, of course, we have the Planning Commission meeting itself. So I guess that makes it eight times. So, so we really are reaching out. Um, coming up on your agenda and what will be coming to the Planning Commission in August, as you've directed as a City Council to staff, um, is an update to their public hearing notice ordinance. And so that is going to be coming to the Planning Commission in August. And it will expand the notification of letters to 500 feet. So that was something that was discussed last fall and we're following up with that with an amendment. In hand with that, we're going to be, um, presenting a resolution to require applicants to post their locations with a sign that has, uh, concise, easy to read information about the project and, and communicate a way in which they can contact staff or the applicant. So those are coming up, uh, to improve our, our notification. So pretty excited about that. Um, the, really the, the, the credit for all of this, uh, goes to William He, Nicole Jones, um, Jen Kenzaback and her communications team. So they've been really, working really well on, on just finding new ways in which to be able to get the word out. And I'm, I'm just really proud of, of the work that they do and our ability to, to connect with, with all of our residents who are, are interested in what's going on.
Thank you for that report. That is very, uh, well, the, the building projects are very exciting, but I really appreciate the work the staff has done. The ability to communicate, cause, uh, I mean, to all of us, all of us on this dias here, hear that, what's going on with fill in the blank, but what about this, what about that?
Mm-hmm.
That sounds like a very effective tool.
Yes, I, I'm really, I'm really excited about it.
Yeah, yeah. So I appreciate the work done on it.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, the other thing I wanted to update you on is our participation in Meet Me in the Streets. What a phenomenal success Valerie Zigmorez has put together from the Chamber. Um, just incredible. And so our, our department has, uh, participated in both of them so far. And we're really lucky that our planning commissioners have come and joined and spent times too. Um, one of the things that's new this time is, uh, William and Nicole put together what I call a Paper Point Presentation. And, and this is a binder that has pictures of all the development projects that are approved, in process and under construction. And it's just visual, people can see it, they can flip through with their own pace. Um, and it really gives us an opportunity also to talk about these projects. Um, what I do like to talk about, for example, um, is, like I mentioned tonight, not only is there the development itself, but there are physical improvements that elevate and improve this town. For example, the Home to Suites Hotel that's being built. They're building Main Street. I mean, they're literally building a road, um, that will go from South Napa Junction to Antonina. And, and that's gonna be a great asset to help with, with road traffic. That's just, you know, one thing. And all of these projects here, there are things we can point to that we're not just building, you know, a, a building or a subdivision. It's building a community and, and a lot of the other things that, that even though someone might not live, for example, at Promontory, they'll probably go to enjoy having a, a more complete road network or bicycle network or even a park. Um, so all of these things I think is important to get the word out, so that people have a more complete picture about what's going on. So.
You know, that, that improvement there with, uh, Homes to Suites, uh, certainly will help connect with the more on the east side of American Canyon in the long term, just having that road in.
That's right.
Uh, restaurants in that area.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I look forward to that. Very, very well thought out. Thank you.
That's right. And, and the Hampton Inn that, or we have construction permit applications now, that was another project. And it will provide a 10-foot wide footpath between the shopping center and the hotel, which of course will be convenient for the hotel guests, but it will also be very convenient for residents on the west side who want to walk to the shopping center and have a nice, safe, convenient way to get there. So we're really always looking for these ways in which to, to build things that help the community as, as we grow and change. Cause obviously, you know, change is always a concern.
Now, that's a conversation I've had many times with, uh, Mr. Holly on all the construction we have. Anything new going in, it has to be about, what's the safe route for pedestrians, safe route to school, bicycle lanes? That has to be all part of that same picture.
That's right.
So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That, uh, Councilmember Joseph?
Yes, uh, thank you for the report. It was very informative. And I have a question that's completely unrelated though, but I was gonna reach out to you and, and now you're here. If somebody wanted to get on the waitlist for the Napa Cove Apartments, do, who do they contact?
Um, they aren't quite yet at that stage in the construction, but you can see that they've got some stucco happening. They're, they're really moving along. Um, so that is something that we'll be reaching out and getting that set up in the same way that happened for the Lemos Point Apartments. They had an overwhelming, uh, positive reaction to that, to the, to their wait, to their waitlist. Um, so we'll also be, they, they are likewise required, as was Lemos Point for that. Um, and we'll be reaching out to them, get that set up. And we kind of have the infrastructure and the plan already kind of laid out.
Okay, so it's not ready to, to put in a request yet?
Not quite yet.
Okay.
But it's getting close.
Thank you.
All right, okay. You have any comments, Council? Thank you for the report. Anything further, Mr. Holly?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Well, we'll move on to, uh, see item 13. Uh, Napa County Local Agency Formation Commission update?
I see that that's on there. We had a strategic planning session, which I was unable to attend because I had an all-day mediation, uh, at work. But I am in the process of trying to connect with, uh, do a coffee with Brendan to get an update on that. And I will provide you with one once I have it.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Napa County Climate Action Committee update? Myself and Councilmember Joseph?
Yeah.
This was included in your committee report.
I was gonna say, uh, I provided my insights on climate action and NVTA, the Transportation Agency. So it's in writing and happy to answer any questions.
Anything further you'd like to add to that?
Uh, no.
Uh, was the, uh, Climate Action Committee did a lot, uh, presentation on, uh, well, I learned some REACH codes. It's, uh, yeah, the typical, uh, say, uh, building code type of thing. Do you want to add something additional to that? If I'm getting it right, the REACH code.
Yeah, the, what struck me is originally REACH codes were all the all-electrical and there's some pushback on that. But there's other REACH codes that can just relate to EV charging stations or anything, you know, that isn't part of the existing uniform building code. So it was a, a nice discussion and, uh, we hopefully gave good direction to staff.
It was helpful for me to understand that a little better. I think the, uh, thing on the, uh, Climate Action Committee, uh, you know, I appreciate the, uh, the energy and the focus of the, uh, members on the committee. But there's also, uh, talked with Mr. Morrison at the very end of that, there's a reality check-in. How much capacity do we have to be able to deliver on something between now and 2030? Uh, you know, just, uh, electric vehicles alone. So I think it behooves us to, uh, have that check-in on, uh, our capacity, given, you know, something like, what did he say, 90,000 vehicles?
Yeah, it, it, yeah, it seemed kind of overwhelming to pull it off by 2030, but.
But you know, it's, it just says, uh, to me not to give up because of that. It's just that, you know, we need to be diligent in pursuing it and making sure that there's an economy attached to that too, in terms of who can afford what with it. I'm satisfied that we are putting more of that into all new construction. That makes sense right there. So that was a good one. Uh, the next on our list is the Transportation Authority.
Actually, the most exciting is we were able to get, I think, 230,000 for, uh, installing some EV charging stations on city property. So that was kind of a cool win. Um, the regional measure three, the toll thing that has now been formally succeeded in a court challenge. Uh, there's a $16 million allocation that can go towards our 29 corridor.
Yeah.
Um, and we were, I don't, we built so many houses that we have become eligible for a transportation-related grant. I don't know the particulars, other than it's always exciting to think that we'll get some money that we can use on transportation. I'm assuming they'll probably want to apply it to the 29 corridor, but, um, at least it gives us something, well, bragging rights, cause I think we came out number six in the Bay Area. And also some funding that can go towards dealing with the traffic that everybody points to as soon as you hear that we're gonna build anything.
Well, I think the, uh, the upside of that also is the, uh, the capacity to invest in other areas. Uh, there was a update on the, uh, new bus terminal as well, in terms of funding availability for that. So that's gonna be, uh, uh, put it geographically, it's, uh, fairly close to the airport. Uh, we got the, uh, Transportation Authority acquired a, a rather sizable property, uh, because the, obviously, uh, bus transit will continue to grow. And, uh, months are so fast, we had a tour of it. Um, it's, uh, very state of the art. So I think it's, it has certainly gonna have the capacity we're all gonna need in the future on that. Of course, uh, being, uh, electric and actually the question was asked, is there's a place for a hydrogen fuel? Should that become a reality? And the answer is yes, they could accommodate that as well. Okay, uh, how about, uh, Napa Valley Tourism Improvement Board?
Yeah, I actually have two updates here. The Napa Valley Tourism Improvement Board and the Association of Bay Area Governments, which I didn't get a chance to put into our last meeting. Um, so the Napa Valley Tourism Corporation Board did not meet in July, but we met, uh, earlier. And, uh, the big report for the valley, and I think those newspapers reported this, is that hotel prices are coming down from ridiculous revenge travel levels. Apparently what happened in '22 was that people got freed from COVID and decided to, to, uh, start traveling again and they had spent up savings and did that. But right now rates are going down a little bit, but not, uh, uh, fast or anything, but they are going down. And I think Napa Valley is preparing for a new normal. Uh, we'll see if those rates hold, but they're still generally high, double what San Francisco is for sure. Um, and so that, that's the biggest trend that's changing. And the Napa Valley, Visit Napa Valley is promoting something too. Because, uh, in, in the last year, articles in newspapers were getting, uh, were digging Napa for being too expensive. And now their, their big campaign is something called Affordable Luxury. So not as expensive, but a little more affordable and you get the luxury with it.
I could get behind that.
Yeah, uh, yeah, yeah. Uh, so we'll be working on that. Uh, the other one, the other, uh, committee I'm on is the Association of Bay Area Governments. Uh, Mayor Garcia sits on the Executive Committee for that. I'm just a voting delegate and they have an annual assembly every year in San Francisco. It was the first time they, I think they've had, held it in per, did they do it in person? In person, yeah, since the pandemic. Uh, we went through a number of things around approving the budget and things like that. There was also some conversation from members of the community, from members of the, of the Bay Area governments about the ongoing issues around housing and the state intervening in local policies and housing. And it was. And it was kind of the tired old thing of, we can't build this, we can't do that, from communities that have not ever met their housing goals. And for a while there, within that group of about 50 to 80 people, all electeds mostly, it sounded like they were not in favor of these policies making them build housing. The one gentleman from Livermore, a new council member, stood up and said, "I'm new on the council, I'm new to this whole thing, and I'm a school teacher. I can't afford to buy a house here." These housing policies that these people were advert, that, that were against actually build more housing, create more opportunities for purchasing, really affects pe, working-class, educated people. And then I'll continue to say that, you know, you need to build more housing throughout the state of California. We're doing our part here in American Canyon, but all throughout that. This, this conversation was followed up by a woman named Tracy Hayden Low. She's a fellow at the Brookings Institution Center for Transformative Placemaking. Sounds like a Brookings Institute kind of thing to create. But in reality, what she did was look at commercial construction, places, people, ethnicity and diversity. And she, while calling out the problems here in California, she, and we hear them all the time, homelessness, expenses, taxes, things of that nature, she reminded everyone that this is a great place to live. The weather's fantastic, we have the highest productivity and per capita income in most regions around the United States, we have education centers that are rich, we have jobs that are prevalent. A lot of communities around the country would be, are absolutely envious of this. While we still have our challenges, there's, you know, one of the big things here in the Bay Area is we probably have one of the most diverse communities anywhere in the nation, but when you talk about the racial and geographic inequality, we're probably at the bottom. The vast majority of the wealth is not spread out across the diverse communities, it's concentrated near the top. And, you know, that's a challenge that we would have to face or try to deal with. And what she had called for, beyond just having job density, places and things of that nature, was centers of economic activity. You know, San Francisco being one, Palo Alto, San Jose being others, and then Oakland and others. Where can you do, where can you create these places that have economic activity and connect them throughout the region? It was followed up by Jim Wonderman, who was on there. Jim Wonderman is the Bay Area Council President, pretty influential figure, representing a lot of businesses who, who advocated for more transportation, transportation connections. We have it here to the Greater Bay Area with the ferry and other things, but obviously in Napa Valley, we need to do a better job on the, on the transportation side. But I think there's an opportunity for what we're doing here in American Canyon, creating more homes and communities, as well as jobs in our Green Island area, to where we're creating what Dr. or Tracy Lowes had said was, these transformative places where you, you, you connect activity centers of that nature. And I thought it was a really fascinating thing, and it just, you know, as much as we as Californians, as well as the, and the, the national discourse on California, the negative discourse that this Bay Area gets a lot, it's, it's still a great place to live. And having just come back from Vegas, where it was 120 degrees, I could say it was fantastic to land in, in, in San Francisco and enjoy my free air conditioning. That's my report. Thanks.
Thanks for your report. I'd just like to add, any other reports from Council? If you're Vice Mayor?
No, no, just a future agenda.
Just want to add a great appreciation for all the great effort that went into a fantastic Fourth of July activity. Thank you Director Kida and your staff and everybody who helped out, all the public works, actually, everybody, Police Department, all of American Canyon folks who come in contact with the public. Great parade, great fireworks. I did have some conversations with some adjacent cities who weren't going to have them at all. Reminded them of the year that we decided to not have fireworks. And I'm seeing Chief Greenberg there with a smile on his face. Yes, the place went crazy, didn't it? Yeah. So it's kind of like a lot of things, you, you try and manage it the best you can. And I don't know that we had any great difficulties in checking back after the Fourth of July, but great show, great effort into that, and, and thank everybody for that. The other one is Meet Me in the Street. Wow, that's a branding event for American Canyon. That is phenomenal. I don't know how many people show up. Yeah, we even get, even remotely get a count. You know, I guess there are thousands, yes. Well, 36 food trucks, I think something like 120 pop-up spaces, two-thirds of a mile, and they didn't use all of it. So that will continue to grow, I think, at, at some point. But it's just, uh, it's very neighborly, it's very friendly. I mean, you know, and CEO Valerie mentioned several times, this place is unique. You have a tree-lined boulevard, two-thirds of a mile long, there's no houses or business facing it. You have a community park adjacent to it, so you can activities for kids and families and adult beverages, and, and everybody has a great time. So I'm just really proud of the effort we put into that and, and everybody who helps out with that. That just really builds community and branding for American Canyon. And that would conclude my comments for the evening. Please do.
So at, something that's really exciting that nobody brought up tonight, but I'm sure will be brought up at the next meeting, is at the next Meet Me in the Street, we have a grand opening for our first-ever accessible park on North Hampton. Sorry, I'm just, every time I drive by there, I stop and like, take pictures of the progress.
You're right.
In love.
I was going to mention that, though, actually, I met Ally there the other day, just, and there is even more being constructed on it. And, yeah, so we're looking forward to that grand opening.
And also, there will be a Battle of the Bands going on on the August event, sponsored by the American Canyon Arts Foundation.
All right, very good.
Thanks to a grant from Napa County.
More stuff coming, more. Yeah, remembering, you would go by there on a regular basis, wouldn't you?
I what?
You'd go by there on a regular basis.
I do.
Yes, right.
Almost every day.
Something about family in the neighborhood, right? Well, very good. So with that being said, I think we've concluded our work for the evening.
Oh, I have a future agenda.
Oh, future, oh, sorry, future agenda items, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, um, for future agenda, I had a conversation last week, Friday, with Fran and Beth over a glass of water at the Gaia, you know, I wasn't drinking. We spoke a little bit about the history of American Canyon, and you know, as everybody know, Beth and Fran have a lot to offer when it comes to history. My intention was to be there for 15 minutes, I ended up being there for about two, two and a half hours.
Oh, wow.
And what was brought up was that, we were talking about people like, and these are people that I don't, I don't know, I'm not familiar with. I'm sure you, Mr. Mayor and Mark, you probably are, Dolly, and, yeah, and, and things, people like that. And I know that we, and Ben Anderson, you know, I do kind of know him, but I like to propose that since, you know, we're asking the PCS to work with us to rename some, some locations that we have, parks and some buildings, that we invest in finding out about our past and what makes us a great city to live in today. And I would ask that we may put some money towards a consultant to kind of get some of the historical data. So when we start talking about renaming locations, that we probably give the proper praise and the proper honoring to those people who really made our city great and had a vision of where we were going to be and where we are, because I'm enjoying the, the work of, the hard work that they provided. And it was really compelling, and I know that we asked the PCS to do this, but we should, we should be able to offer them something to help them out with developing these names and honor people that really got this city kick-started early on. So just wanted to put it out there that I think that's something that we should do, and I want to thank Beth and Fran for taking up most of my evening on Friday night. I really enjoyed it, and I really enjoyed the passion that you guys had when you presented that to me, you know. Thank you.
Do you want to put that in the form of a motion for a future agenda item?
I would.
But, but would that be a future agenda item for us, or is this direction to give to?
So, I'm interpreting this as a future agenda item mainly because we're talking about an appropriation, right? We're talking about bringing in some resources, so although it would probably be within my spending authority, I'm not planning on spending that much, but I would bring it back as a, as a future agenda item, just to kind of sunshine it and daylight it a little bit and tie it to the work the PCS is doing. So it would, it'd be a short item, Council, but...
And the way, the way I look at it is that the people in the PCS have probably just been here in American Canyon just as long as I have. But when I had the conversation with them and they mentioned those names, I was like, wow, I didn't know who these people were, you know? And it's important that I think if we're going to be making decisions about renaming things, understanding and realizing where we, how we got here is important.
Absolutely.
Some of those are on that picture on the wall in the hallway.
You're in all of them.
The ladies, yeah, yeah.
And also, I, I would like to throw in the oral histories, just sitting down with a tape recorder with Fran for a few hours, and some of the other old timers. I think that would be in our best interest, even, you know, not even transcribing them, just having them, somebody talking about what's been going on for 50, 60 years would be important.
I would add to that, anybody has family pictures they would like to share? You know, those are treasures for our community, you know, that, I run into that a time or two, somebody sewing some old, old family album. You know, there's, well, the one I have in my office is this huge, massive aerial photograph of Carquina Straits of Vallejo. I got it because at the very top, I can make out the Napa Airport outline. And below that, I can see this kind of a white rectangle, oh, that's McKnight Acres. And I can see the eucalyptus trees where your house is, Fran. And then across the street is the basalt plant. And that's all that's here. It's just, wow. And that was taken late 1940s. So, yeah, good thought. Put it in a motion, is there a second to that motion?
I'm a second.
Okay. We have a roll call, please?
I think David had a question.
Oh, did you have a question or comment?
Uh, no, sir, I was waiting for the next future agenda item.
Councilmember Abadamos?
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes, thank you. Councilwoman Oro, you added a future agenda item?
Yeah, I would like to add to the future agenda item, a recent Senate bill that was just passed and approved by the governor and approved by, endorsed by the League of California Cities. And I would like to take it up as a council. It's SB 329 regarding increasing council compensation. If we could bring that up before the end of the year, I think it goes in effect to January, would love to see that and have the support of the council to discuss that.
Thank you for raising that, I did read that as well, I believe, yeah.
I would like, you want a discussion, or do you want me to make a motion to bring that up to an agenda item?
We can have discussion if we need to, if, make a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to just have this agendized before the end of the year, SB 329, which would address inequality by allowing councils to adjust their maximum pay to reflect inflation as measured by the California Price Index.
I'll second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Abadamos?
Yes.
Councilmember Joseph?
For discussion, yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Yeah, that's an important clarification, so this is not actually political advocacy, this bill's already been passed and signed by the governor, we're talking about implementation, potential implementation. So, yeah, we'll bring an item back.
Discussion. Very good. Anything further for, for future agenda items? Well, we have concluded our work. Anything further? Thank you all, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Good night, American Canyon.